We are all here. Welcome to night number six of the Board of Selectmen fiscal 22 budget deliberations. Tonight, we will be continuing our discussion about budget modifications. But we're going to start the evening tonight with a public comment. And I know we have several guests this evening. I did promise Lori Bore, Chairman of the Parks and Rec Commission, that she could go first this evening because she has another meeting. So without further ado, hopefully Lori can be unmuted and offer her comment.
I am, and I think I'm unmuted.
You are.
Oh, and there's my webcam.
Welcome.
I was on before and Kate was like, nope, we don't want to see you. She clicked me off, not interested. All right, well, thank you for making me first. My husband and I do have another commitment, but he's getting going on that. I understand there was discussion around our budget item regarding the parks monitor. So I specifically did want to address that. This evening, I've got some notes that I'll be referring to. So forgive me from looking down some, but I'll go through those and then probably ad lib a little bit as well. But by virtue of it being in the budget request, the Parks and Recreation Commission does support the seasonal park monitor program. While we instituted that due to the pandemic and our desire to monitor crowding and enforce social distancing in the parks, we quickly learned the greater benefits of having boots on the ground in all our parks last summer. The Parks Monitor circulates daily between all of Darien's major parks. They are a visible presence charged with assuring that parks rules are followed, lending a helping hand and adding a visible security presence to our parks. You know, one key area I mentioned where we found the support was really helpful was enforcing the dog rules at the parks. That's an area we have struggled with year after year. The requirements are different in each park and we've historically had a lot of violations. And our parks monitors did a lot of great work around that. And we definitely found that people just knowing that the monitor was coming around and watching, we saw an improvement in adherence to the rules last summer. Other areas, the things they would look out for were things like people using glass bottles on the beaches, which is prohibited, other safety hazards. They helped picking up trash. And on weekends, importantly, they monitored parking lot capacity so that we could manage that. The Parks Monitor also really served as ambassador for our Parks and Recreation Department. And they became acquainted with many of the townspeople over the summer. And we really got some nice feedback. We had really good, you know, we had some bumps initially, but we ended up with one key, really, really good person. And he really got to know townspeople by name. And he just represented the Parks Department of the town very, very well. So it was a real positive experience for people. Pam and I were provided with daily reports regarding activity and issues at the parks, which proved very useful in our planning and decision making over the summer. We received considerable communication from townspeople during the peak season, given that our parks were more heavily used than ever. The presence of the Parks Monitor allowed us to gain independent insight as to what was happening at the parks on a daily basis. I do want to acknowledge that Parks and Rec receives some support from the police department in terms of the animal control officer. But the amount of time he spends in the parks is limited as he's responsible for covering all animal issues townwide, not just in the park. He also does not work on weekends. We also received very excellent support from the police department. And Pam and I are in communication with the chief and the captains regularly. But their primary function is not, nor should it be, looking out for violations of park rules. The commission has voted to increase the seasonal beach parking permit by $5, which will offset the proposed cost of the monitor for the summer. We believe this is appropriate for the community to absorb the cost and as we, the residents, who will derive the primary benefit of having the parks monitored in terms of increased security, enforcement of rules, and an individual in the parks to troubleshoot and to provide a helping hand. I note that some other communities in Connecticut have either moved to or are considering placing security cameras in their parks. So park security is an increasing issue that we need to be mindful of. The specifics of the program, last year, we started with two parks monitors on duty some days. What we're looking at and proposing for this year would be one on duty, seven days a week, but with more limited hours on Monday to Thursdays from 12 till 6, and Fridays through Sunday from 10 to 8, but with flexibility. Pam was really good last summer. If the weather was poor and the attendance at the parks would light, she would release the monitor for the day. So we can be very flexible. Or if we're aware of events or hear about things going on at the parks, we can adjust the hours. You know, I'll mention that when there was one day last summer, I went down because I like to meet with a monitor myself from time to time. I met him down at Weed Beach. I remember it was before the end of the workday. So it was kind of lateish afternoon because I remember feeling guilty that I was scampering out of work. And I could not believe how busy Weed Beach was. I thought I was like the only dummy in town who was actually working because Weed Beach was completely full. And it was, I don't know if you remember, I know Pam's on the line. It was like a Tuesday or a Wednesday or something. And the beach, it really was full. So we do get usage during the weekdays of the parks, you know, pretty fully, but more days than others. So really in closing, I just, I want to reference the National Parks and Recreation and Parks Association. We do have a membership and myself, Pam, the commission members, get the benefit of all of their publications and newsletters. And really, this past year in particular, there's been many articles about, you know, Parks and Recreation Services have three values that they consider to make them essential services to communities. And that's the economic value, the health and environmental benefit, and the social importance. And they went on to say in the article I was looking at today that just as water, sewer, and public safety are considered essential public services, parks are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in a community, ensuring the health of families and youth, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of the community and the region. So I really urge you, when you're considering our Parks and Rec budget, that you think about it in terms of it being an essential service and not something that's discretionary. And those are my comments for this evening.
Thank you very much, Lori. We appreciate you being here to give your firsthand account of the benefits of the park monitors. Do any of our board members have questions for Lori this evening?
No. Thank you, Lori, for coming and speaking.
Thank you so much.
Did you have any question on Cherry Lawn, Jamie? Are we good on that?
Well, I just wanted to, you know, I called Lori earlier today and told her that the Board of Selectmen was considering reinstating the refurbishment of the tennis courts at Cherry Lawn Park. So if you have comments that you'd like to add, Lori, that would be great, too.
Yeah, we did place that in the budget for this year. And Pam and the staff really have concluded that the time has come, that they are in need of resurfacing. And the commission is very committed to making sure that we really don't let our facilities get too far gone before we address them, that we really want to place focus on maintaining things to good quality. I kind of think that now that people have really discovered our parks, that we're going to see that usage really keep up. I have asked a couple of members of the commission to start working on what we're calling a standards of care document that we're going to be developing over the next few months to really frame how the commission thinks about the way that the parks and the level to which they should be maintained and cared for. And we think that will be something that will help inform our discussions on the commission with Pam and then with the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance, you know, going forward. So that we can really, thinking about things, if we put down tennis courts and we're told the useful life is 10 years, should we be managing to redoing them 10 years and not saying, well, let's go 15 years or whatever? So things of that, we want to start putting a better framework around.
That's a great idea, actually. Thank you for your work on that. We'll look forward to seeing the outcome. Krista?
I'm sorry, I did think of a question going back to the park monitor. Lori, in your comments, you were talking about enforcing the rules and numerous, which are valuable. Does this individual have any, I'm sorry, teeth perhaps? Or just the presence and the verbal reminder is what he or she has been successful in correcting behavior?
Kristi, it's mostly the latter. To be specific, the individual works for a private security firm. And then we contract with the security firm. He is in uniform, for what that's worth. He drives a vehicle that's marked security. So there's a bit of official look. It's just not like a guy in a baseball cap and a T-shirt. I think he's usually got a safety vest on. And he, you know, if he sees a violation, he engages the individual. He doesn't have true enforcement powers, but to the extent he, and we had very few circumstances where we had people being very difficult, then he has a direct line to the police department and he'll call them up and engage them as necessary. So we're using the police for true problematic issues. But he will try to take care of a situation and provide reminders.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much.
He's a real, we're hoping we can get the same gentleman back. He really was fabulous.
Hey Lori, it's Dave Martin.
Hi, Dave.
Just to double check on the tennis courts then, since you guys had initially proposed them and put them in for Cherry Lawn, that is a project that you'd be fully able to manage and be engaged with, should it go forward?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Yep, and I re-discussed that with Pam this evening just a bit ago. I know she's on the line as well. I think she was.
Yes, she's here.
Yeah, she's there.
All right.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for Lori before she leaves?
Thank you, Lori.
All right, thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Lori.
For your consideration.
Kate, do we have any other members of the public that wish to speak this evening? If you do wish to speak, please indicate by leaving a message in the chat for us. I don't see any other comments coming up in the chat, but we'll give it another minute.
Jamie, I'd like to speak, and I think Adele would like to speak also.
Okay, I don't see her name in the chat, but that's great. And I see Adele is on camera and unmuted, so we'll turn to Adele.
Forgive me, my updates are blocking the chat on my computer. So I was madly looking for it, yeah. But I had to okay it ahead of time. Well, I do think Lori, by the way, said it all. I was, am speaking in support of the Parks Monitor. But I'll go ahead and give my little spiel. And then if there's any questions you want to ask me. Good evening, this is Adele Coniff, RTM Parks and Recreation Committee Chairman. I've been listening to your review of the Town Administrators 2021-2022 Town of Darien Proposed Budget, and thank you for your hard work. You've been at it a long time. The RTM Park and Rec Committee has been following the Park and Rec Commission's budget request since last fall. The commission finalized their request in December and Pam Gary presented the commission's budget request to our committee in January. So we're well informed. I know this evening you'll be deliberating possible cuts. And I'd like to speak in support of the addition of the seasonal security guard in Park and Rec's operating budget. Last summer was a bit of a roller coaster ride with the parks being completely closed for a while and then opening with restrictions in place. You know, as I sat down to think about this, I thought, you know, it bears remembering exactly what we went through last summer and really the all hands on deck, including the town, Jamie, and so many of you, to make sure that we got through it all and got through it well. Adding security monitors which visited the parks in addition to the, sorry, I lost my place now that I started talking without it. Adding security monitors which visited the parks in addition to the beaches helped the town be able to reopen, keeping everyone safe. They reminded people what the rules were. And in time, their presence alone was a deterrent to poor practices. Last summer, by July, we found the need to restrict access to our beaches because of overcrowding. The monitors helped with that process, providing a presence at the beaches and parks during the day, evening, and on the weekends. They helped keep things orderly. This summer, our beaches and parks will likely be very busy. We will likely still be wearing masks and social distancing. There's funding in our current budget to fund the patrolling guard in May and June. This budget request would fund the rest of this summer and the beginning of the 2022 season. Having more security at our beaches helps, whether it's because of COVID or just a regular year. And I believe it's money well spent. And for, as far as, you know, just, I've been listening to what you guys have been discussing. So the Cherry Lawn tennis courts. And I just suggest on that one that everybody go have a look if you haven't seen them. And I think you'll all agree that they, it's time for a rebuild. And I certainly support that, too. And David, I know you were, you were looking at the, talking about the mowers last night and just wondering, making sure that we needed them. And so I asked Pam to remind me today of how many places that they mow the grass. And it's a lot more than just the parks. But just to give you an idea, they mow grass at the police department property, the Hecker property, and then Highland Farms, Weed Beach Meadow, which is new. And then I think you're going to be adding tonight the fire training property. So it's a lot. And also, they take care of our beaches, needless to say, and many, many things more. But they need good, they need good equipment to do that. So I thank you for your time and good evening.
Adele, thank you very much. And we very much appreciate that you've been following our process. Thanks for being here tonight and offering your thing. So next, we will go to Patty Bumgartner. Oh, you're unmuted, Patty.
Unmuted.
All right.
There you go.
There you go.
Just took a minute, thank you. Patty Bumgartner, Vice Chair, Parks and Rec. I reiterate everything that Lori said and that my chair, Adele, said as well. I'm just going to talk from a personal standpoint. I loved Lori's line, "Boots on the ground." So I got to know Bob from West Tech, which is the gentleman that Lori was referencing. He was at every park and every beach every day. The reason I know that is because we got a pandemic pop the end of April and we had to stay home because it was, you know, core COVID. But after that, in May, when I felt it was safe, I was out. So in the early days, when she was little, I was at Cherry Lawn at 6:00 AM just waiting to get out there. And then she had so much energy that I would take her for a ride after Cherry Lawn. And we would drive down with her thing in the car through Pear Tree Point and Weed Beach. And I kind of felt that that point, you know, I know that Pam had hired these security guards. And as somebody who was living here and able to get out, because fortunately I was healthy and I had to get out because of the dog, that I wanted to be a little bit of her eyes and ears. So I tried to go to the beaches every day along with Cherry Lawn, which is kind of my dedicated park. And I went to Tilly Pond quite a bit as well. I saw Bob everywhere, morning, noon, night. Last one there at the park at sunset, I have pictures of him, first one there. And I thought West Tech did an amazing job and he was particularly good. He has a South Carolina connection. And so I think maybe that southern way of approaching people and reinforcing the rules without them feeling bullied or told in a strong way what to do was very, very effective. I know it was effective at Cherry Lawn for the people who needed to be reinforced on the dog rules. And I watched him, you know, break up a party of teenage kids at Weed Beach at the end of the day. And, you know, nobody was yelling and screaming, he just got it done. And so I do think he was a support to both the police and the animal control from that. And I strongly, strongly support them, him. I think the security program did an excellent job. That's number one. Quickly, number two, tennis courts. You know, I know it's a high-ticket item, but under the great program Lori's doing, standards of care. Having been involved in getting that basketball court fixed after a decade, I really feel strongly, we don't want to see our tennis courts get as dilapidated as it did. I know you can't go down there right now and see it because it's covered with snow, but I have photographs that I can send from before it snowed from over the, you know, in August and September. There's a lot of patching that was done. The patching was done. And there's a lot of cracks throughout that. And so I would encourage that, I mean, we can't even, even if it's in the budget, you couldn't even start to do anything till July 1st, right? With the money is approved. So we're really looking at almost a full year by the time you would bid it out and move forward and et cetera. So these tennis courts were packed, as were Weed Beach. So I strongly support doing it. Just to give you some background, the last time they patched were three years ago. And you will see it needs it. The lifetime of a post-tension court, which is what Pam has recommended, it's double the life of an asphalt court. So it's 25 to 30 years. I think this seems like an excellent bonding project. And finally, in terms of supporting the mower, Jim Flynn and that crew is amazing. They work so hard. I know you know that, Jamie. I see them in the parks, particularly at Cherry Lawn, and I see them at Highland. And as you all talked about, I think Dave asked about, you know, will this be more efficient? I watch how hard they work. A second mower can really help because as, as was explained yesterday, I think by Kate, you're going to have one mower at one property. Cherry Lawn is pretty big. And Highland that we've now bought and owned and need to maintain is very, very big. So I think this is a no-brainer to support because it's efficiency. That's it, thanks so much. Appreciate your support and all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Patty. Anybody have any questions for Patty?
No, thanks Patty, thanks so much.
Thank you.
That's great. Do we have anyone else who wants to speak during public comment? Kate, are you aware of anyone else that wished to speak?
I am not. But I would say again, if anybody else wishes to speak, please send a quick chat to us.
Yep, we'll wait just a moment and then we will move to our deliberations. I'm hearing Jeopardy music in my head. Okay, I don't see anyone putting their name in the chat. David, did you have a comment?
I just, while we were waiting on the chat, I was just going to ask Kate if she would clarify something for me. In the known adjustments in the spreadsheet, there's the increase to the beach permits for $37,500. That's in addition to the $45,000 increase that's already in the budget, right?
Yes, everything on the known adjustments is in addition to what was in Kate's proposed budget.
All right, so the math has been, the math has been figured that it was going to be 45, but we changed the price to 50, which gives it the extra 37.5. Perfect, that's what I thought, but I just want to make sure because I didn't remember.
Okay, I see no one who wants to comment. So we will close our public hearing on the budget. And we will move right into deliberations. Kate, maybe you'd like to go through some of the documentation you sent to us today? You and Jen?
Yeah, let me just get my screen set.
And Kate, as you're setting that up, I just have a question concerning this spreadsheet. Thank you so much for sending it over. Just to clarify, you're under T A Y O Y, the first tab, under proposed with known adjustments. Does that include everything but those in yellow on the third tab?
Yeah, I think I might have sent out the wrong file. Because it should have had some more information. It should have had a note on bonding information. Hang on a second.
Okay, I was looking at that, the known adjustment tab.
Right, right, I think, right, but I think I might have not sent out the most up-to-date one.
Okay.
Just give me a minute.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, so the difference here is just changing out what is actually cuts or adds versus what are proposed for alternate revenue sources. So now your question.
Okay, so under the first tab, I have T A Y O Y.
Go ahead.
And the proposed with known adj, oh, correct, right, there we go. Actually, I have different numbers.
Right, that's, I sent out the wrong version, I apologize.
Okay.
Yeah, she had just pulled up the correct version, Krista. So let's look at the correct version and then you can ask your question.
Okay, then just to clarify, versus the third tab of known adjustments. Perfect. On the version, we have the Fire Commission, various departments, and capital parking for the shelters. I just was curious if those were put into, or were those being held out? Like you had waiting on answers on some of these on what we received. So I just didn't know if they were in or not.
There, if it says known, we've already accounted for that in that Y O Y. It's in that known adjustment number.
So the capital parking?
That's, that.
100 came in?
Yes.
Okay.
But parking, okay, let me, let me, let me rephrase. This is the general fund. Only the general fund. The capital parking has nothing to do with the general fund.
Okay, so that's not in your.
Because it doesn't belong in here.
Okay.
Okay.
So Kate, is this operating and not capital?
This is, well, so it is the operating plus the transfer that we need to make from operating to the capital. But sewer and parking capital are separate entities. They don't, okay?
Okay.
Okay.
They're self, they're self-funding accounts. So the way I like to look at it is we don't tax for capital expenditures from the sewer or the parking fund. Is that will be, would that be an accurate way to describe that, Kate?
Yes.
So if there's money in the parking capital fund, we can do capital projects related to parking. And the sewer user fees fund any sewer capital projects. So the budget that you're looking at here is the budget on which we need to levy a tax.
Okay, so not included. I could see some were highlighted in yellow, others weren't. So I wasn't sure what was in the proposed adjustments and what wasn't. But, okay, I think we can move on. Thank you. So these are what, what is open, what you have to decide on, things that we were getting further information for you. So Jamie, do you want me to just start at the top of these?
Sure, yep.
Okay, so the unmanned drone, I spoke to Mark McKeon about it this afternoon. And it would be something that could be used by other departments, not just the police department. It could be used by the fire departments, by the fire marshal, by the building department. There may even be other, he also said it could be. There may even be other, um, he also said it could be used for the town as we were looking at construction projects. He um, said, for example, Ox Ridge to get an overhead view as we were constructing the school. Um, we don't have anyone specifically identified at this time to uh, get the license to operate it. But um, the cost to train and get licensed, um, I looked that up online today. And between the training classes and the license itself, it's less than $500, depending on which training class you, you take. Um, so that, he said, the worst part about the training is you have to go to an airport, this, you know, specific airports where you can get, take your exam. Um, so the um, concrete pad, I had reached out to the Fire Commission to get the specs that they use to get their estimate and to get the actual estimate. They said they would, excuse me, provide it, but I have not received that as of yet.
Hold on, Kate.
Sure.
I'm thinking that it might be efficient to, um, as we go through each one of these, to sort of uh, make decisions about them so we can just move forward. So um, thank you for getting that additional information about the drone. I'm gonna recommend that we cut the drone. Um, not that I don't think it's a useful tool to have, but um, it's only come up as a potential useful tool for one of the storms this year. Um, and you know, I'd like to see a, a better case made for utilization and to identify people that are willing to go through the training. Um, and so, you know, we haven't heard from any other departments that uh, they've been asking for this. So, you know, I'd like to hear from everybody else, but I'm gonna recommend that for this year, it's a cut. Sarah?
I would agree. I think it's a fantastic tool that will be great to use in those situations. Maybe in the next year, we'll identify a couple of individuals and, you know, who's gonna be responsible and the training and so forth. I think we keep this maybe on the back burner for next year, but I think it's a fantastic tool, but maybe limited in use.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments they wanna share? Uh, if you do not concur with cutting it, please let me know right now.
Concur.
Thank you. Okay, I'll assume we're, we all are in agreement that that will be a cut. Go ahead, Kate.
Okay, so on the concrete pad, um, I can't give you any update. As I said, I haven't gotten the information from um, the Fire Commission. They did say they would provide it. Um, you know, my thought on this, we don't really know that there would be savings by bidding it out with the sidewalk. Um, I think it's a worthy project. I think we should do it. They've been asking for, for a while. But it's up to you.
Do you think we'd have information before Monday?
That's possible, yes. Yeah.
I support this expense. So um, we'll wait to make our final decision till Monday.
Okay.
If anyone else has any comments.
Okay, so moving on to the fire marshal. Um, Brian Transport, our mechanic, is going to um, get out by Monday. He will have had an opportunity to inspect the police vehicles and let us know if we think um, we can, we can use um, both of the hand-me-downs we're gonna get. Um, I also did speak to um, to Bobby Bush about the possibility of mileage reimbursement or um, a stipend for use of the personal vehicles. Um, he said, you know, it's possible. It's not ideal, um, because they have equipment that they have to bring with them. And it means moving it in and out of vehicles back to the office. Um, they do often have two, two or more inspectors on during the day. So um, they do need the two vehicles or they need to be able to transport two, two people. So um, the other thing that I talked to Ed about doing is um, if we really can't use um, both of the police hand-me-downs, looking to perhaps replace um, vehicle of a department, you know, who has a vehicle now and has heavier use, more in need of a new vehicle, and then pass their hand-me-down to the fire marshal. So we'll have an answer for you on Monday on what we can do here.
Sounds good.
Um, Cherry Lawn Tennis Court. That was proposed to be added back by um, a couple of members.
Additional board comments about the Cherry Lawn Tennis Court. I'm inclined to support the funding to improve those. Uh, I know a couple of years ago, they were in need of improvement. Um, so it's only gotten worse. And looking at their out-year capital budgets, they have significant expenses going forward too, capital expenses. So I support moving it forward this year and, and recommending to the Board of Finance that they bond it.
I absolutely support it. I thank you, Kate, very much for being cognizant of the full budget. I appreciate the, the look you took at it for the courts, but um, I would like to see this put back in the budget and agree the bonding as a suggested financing method. But leave that to Board of Finance.
Um, does everyone else agree that we uh, will support adding this to the, our budget this year?
Yes.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Sarah. Kip? Great, thank you.
Okay, um, telepon dredging. Um, did a lot of talking to Pam about this today. Um, our environmental protection officer has advised us that it, um, we only, only need local permits for this. Um, we will have to do testing of the soil removed, but it should not be expensive. So yes, this project can all be done in one year. Um, if the funding is in place.
That's good news. Can be done in one year. Uh, I'd like to support this project.
It, it was 82, 81?
Yes, 82.
Eighty.
Okay. It is not just dredging. It's also replacing um, or repairing pathways.
Widening too, widening the uh.
They're combined because the type of equipment we need to do um, would be used in both. So Parks and Rec felt it was um, good way to approach it, to have all that equipment there at one time to get it all done.
Maybe that'll scare off the geese.
Yeah.
Maybe. The dogs will. I think the dogs are backing up.
I thought the algae would scare the geese, though.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm good with the telepon dredging.
Okay, great. Thanks, Kip. Thanks, David. Sarah. Good.
Okay, so the um, lawnmower. Um, Pam is reaching out to her peers to see if any other towns lease their large mowers. Um, but, you know, we won't have an answer back on that tonight. Um, but she did point out that our mowers last 20-plus years because we maintain them in-house. So, you know, I think we see um, but, you know, it's cost-effective for us to be buying them um, because we keep them so long.
It's good, good to know that you're maintaining them well. Your question is whether technology is outpacing your 20-year life.
Yes.
I think it's always a good business practice for um, the, the departments that are buying equipment to always be looking at whether it's better to lease or to purchase as, as a policy issue. So thoughts on supporting this? I support this. Anyone else?
I support it. Just questioning whether, I only wrote, wrote the issue about leasing versus buying, that's all.
Yep. Okay, thank you. I saw Sarah concurs. Kip supports. David, Krista?
So we'll support putting this back into the budget.
It was never removed.
This is the other one. I'm sorry, I'm being the leaf blower. Sorry. Thank you. Yes, I support it.
Yeah, listen, my, my, my real issue here is that we don't actually measure the efficiency of the parks crew. Uh, and, you know, monitoring their actual time spent in each park and the amount of time that they spend doing certain things would be good. I mean, you know, ideally, if we're gonna spend $27,000 and another 75 on another mower next year, I'd like to have some way to measure that the improved efficiency we talk about actually results in more stuff getting done. I don't see that there's a mechanism to do that currently, but, you know, uh, you know, the promise of more efficiency sounds good.
Um, so the one thing that I think it is important to remember too, um, in addition to being able to do more with their time by being more efficient with the mowing, we have to remember that we've added new properties and will continue to add new property to maintain. You know, Highland Farms certainly is a biggie. Um, at some point, we will have uh, change in amenities. We beach with the Weed Beach Meadow and, and a project that will hopefully go forward there. Um, and certainly maybe some additional work at some point in the future at Pear Tree Beach. So, you know, as, as we enhance our parks, as we add more properties, um, and keeping in, in mind the expectation of the level of maintenance that our taxpayers and park users um, demand of us, uh, I think, you know, it's good to give our parks crew the, the tools necessary.
Yep, fair enough.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Um, the next one is the ad for Edgerton Property Improvements.
So you all should have received today from my office a 2006 feasibility study. The only reason why I sent that to you is because it has a lot of great background information on the parcel. You know, it's essentially 7.3 acres. Um, and, you know, the, the ask for the budget is some money to take down some dead trees, to level, remove some asphalt, and to plant some grass for now. Um, so I'd love your comments on whether you would like to add that into the budget now or wait and craft a, a larger, more complete project uh, that incorporates whatever our um, the use that the Board of Selectmen decides over the coming months. Knowing that that project then wouldn't happen until fiscal year '23. Yes, Sarah?
So I took some time and reviewed the documents. I love that you sent them over. Thank you very much. Um, it's fascinating to see some of the things that were thought of looking at this 15 years ago. It's a bigger piece of property than I would have thought. And I haven't seen that, you know, in the past few months. And I know it's covered with snow right now. We just started talking about this. So there's a large part of me that would like to maybe wait because I would love to know more of what we can do with this before we spend some money and trying to just kinda make it look more presentable. And yet, we don't really know yet exactly what we wanna do with it. It could be, we're grading it, and then at some point, maybe we'll be digging up the entire site. So I don't know that I'm that kind of behind spending the money if we don't really know what we wanna do with it yet.
So I, I appreciate, yeah, I appreciate that position, and that's certainly a rational thought process. Um, my thinking in trying to move it forward was to get the property in at least some moderately usable form. Because it's this beautiful, you know, seven acres of open space in the middle of a fairly densely populated area, only uh, becoming more dense with the Nuroton Heights um, development and the Palmer development coming online in the future, in the near future. There's gonna be a lot of people who live there who are gonna be looking for places to walk to and to enjoy uh, the out-of-doors. And there really are very limited places. They can walk over to Baker, yes. Um, and there's a little bit of open space, not much at McGowan Park. Um, so I, I saw this as an opportunity to create in a, in a very kind of undeveloped, natural way, a place where people could enjoy the out-of-doors. That was my only thought process. Other board comments?
I think that's a good thought, Jamie, because we don't really know, you know, how successful or how quickly the uh, federal property will fill up. Um, and there is not, as you point out, there is not much of open space for them to go to other than maybe this and a little bit of McGowan Field. I suppose that the uh, limited amount of work that's gonna be done from filling and taking away pavement and cutting down dead trees is what you do anyway to a piece of property. Um, again, but as Sarah points out, if you're gonna do a lot of digging later on, it could be repetitive work. All right, this is a tough one. Probably wise to do it, given the unknowns of what's gonna happen.
Well, I, I think part of my, also my thought process is, you know, we're not sure we're gonna come to an agreement on a use. And, you know, what, what I wouldn't like to see is the property staying in its current form, where it's really not usable by anyone.
It looks pretty, it looks pretty bad.
Yeah. But I do wanna hear from David and Krista on this too.
Um, I would just like to the opportunity to look over the material a little bit more. I didn't have as much time, perhaps for um, Monday. I do appreciate the um, bringing it to our attention and um, getting it really on the table and to make it a usable piece. I would have to agree. I'd love to see us have a better understanding as to even it, um, a more defined use as opposed, but open space is fine, but is, can Parks and Rec use it? Can the um, youth group, anybody right now use it? So I would rather vote on Monday, if that's okay, but generally, I would support the idea.
Sure. Okay, between now and Monday, I would like to ask that if any of you have specific questions relating to the property, if you could send them to me and Kate, then we'll be prepared to finish the discussion on them.
Okay, um, in the parking capital fund, we were adding $100,000 for canopies. I'm, well, more shelters at the um, Darien Station. And remember, this is not a tax impact.
Right.
I support that.
Thank you. Great, thanks, Kip. Sarah, I think you're nodding your head. Thumbs up. Great. David? Okay.
Perfect.
Great.
Okay, moving on to general fund operating items. Um, cut $15,000 from professional services for, which is funding for the Wayfinding Project.
Okay.
Yep, that can wait.
Great.
All right. Um, we also talked about, was there a different way to procure grant consultant service, services?
So I made a phone call to the Executive Director of West Cog today. Um, West Cog has spoken several times about small towns like ours that don't have on staff someone who writes grants or, or researches and finds grants. And that has come up from a number of communities. So I think there's a possibility that this could become a regional service, that maybe towns would pay a fee to have that grant writer write us a grant. Um, I feel like I'd like to do a little bit more work to understand what the options are in terms of procuring this service. So I'm willing to cut this from the budget at this time. But I think it's a really important service that we need to find a way to um, to incorporate at some point in time. But I think it's a really important service that we need to find a way to, to incorporate at some point in time in the right method for us.
What is the dollar amount associated with this, then?
I think it's, is it 15 grand, Kate?
Maybe 15, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Other thoughts?
Kate, you said 15, 1.5?
1.5.
Okay.
I support the, the service and pursuing the service, but it looks like there's other options. So I would support the cut, though supporting, looking for other ways in which to achieve that service in a different manner.
Okay.
David? Thank you. Great, okay. That's a cut.
Okay. There was discussion around increasing support to the Chamber of Commerce. We currently contribute $5,000. That is earmarked for the holiday light. I'm sorry, they requested $5,000, and our grant has traditionally been earmarked for the holiday lights.
So I reached out to the Board Chair today, and they're very grateful for our continued support for the holiday lights. They fund the holiday lights out of a different account, out of their foundation account. So Cheryl would prefer that we earmark the $5,000 for the holiday lights, if that's our desire. And they certainly would be grateful for any additional contribution that we'd like to make to their general operating efforts of the Darien Chamber. So I think what I'd like to recommend this evening is that we support the $5,000 for the holiday lights. They might be looking to make some changes to those lights, too, some enhancements, which is great. We discussed that. And to, to offer them a $1,000 contribution to Chamber operations on behalf of the town for a total of $6,000.
I'm good with that?
I would definitely support that.
Thank you. I'm sorry, David. It looks like Sarah was good with that. David?
Yeah, let's say yes.
Perfect, thank you. I know we'll be very grateful for that.
So that's just an add of 1,000 there?
Correct.
Yes. Okay, Historical Society, you wish to continue the same level of support that we've provided for the last several years?
Yeah, I wanted to talk to the board about this. We haven't really had any additional input from the Board of Directors at the Historical Society yet. I don't know if they have finalized their budget for the coming year, but $10,000 is a very large contribution, outsized compared to contributions that we make to other organizations. So I think I'd like a little more time to revisit that with, with the Board Chair. Any other thoughts on that? Sarah, do you have a comment?
Jamie, they came to us a couple of years ago, right? Or maybe it was last year, I forget.
No.
Pardon?
It's three or four years ago.
Yeah.
Time flies when you're having so much fun. But they asked for, they asked for quite a bit more to cover a part of their operations, and we said no. I think at that time, we kind of defined that this was what was being used to preserve the documents about our, our town's history. To the extent that that cost has gone down or whatever, that support is not necessary, that's probably what you're going to ask them about. So I'd be interested to know what, what feedback you get.
Yeah.
Is this something for Monday, or this was something you would suggest putting off and not funding? I'm sorry, just to clarify.
I'd like to have a little more time, see if I can have that conversation by Monday.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. I support that.
One of the things I'd like to see when we do these kind of grants is some check-in from them, whether it's six months, it's a year, what they've done with the grant in the past year, what it was used for. I think the description has been the same over the past few years. Is it costing 10,000 to help preserve those documents? I don't know. They had mentioned equipment in previous years that was not mentioned specifically in this year. So, yeah, I'd love to know more from the Board of Directors, what it is they want to do. And is this for operating expenses? What is their overall budget? And there's not enough information, I think, for us to make that decision.
Yeah, I agree. And all of that will be incorporated into our, our grant agreement process. But I certainly agree on at least an annual accounting. Okay, so we'll hold that off until Monday.
Okay. Next. You, the question I have been asked, could the town do the mowing landscaping at the Drill Tower? And I discussed this with Pam Gary, and they are willing to give it a shot for a year, see if they can do it with, you know, with their existing responsibilities. So it may come back to us in a year if Parks and Rec cannot, finds that, you know, it's not effective for them to do it. But at the moment, we can cut that $7,500.
Oh, that's great. That's great.
Next up is your general overhead contingency. You talked last night about cutting it by $150,000 based on historical usage.
Great.
Yes, so a member of the Board of Finance just wanted to remind us that this Board of Finance contingency covers both the Board of Selectmen's budget and the Board of Education's budget. You know, I, I think our thought, my thought still holds, just the, the way we look at every other budget line item is to look at historic use. So, you know, based on historic use, I'd like to recommend the cut that we were considering prior.
I agree. Agree.
Great. Krista? You good?
Yes, no, absolutely.
Okay, perfect.
All right, next up, I spoke with Town Council, and he felt that we did not need the additional $30,000 that had been included in that budget for COVID-related legal expenses for fiscal '22, so we can cut that $30,000.
Great.
Good.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay, next up, the security services, which you talked, we heard from Parks and Rec about earlier.
I'm willing to support, give it a try for another year, and, and as always, reassess. The one thing that's on my mind is, you know, do we, do we need somebody seven days a week? So I'd support giving it a try for another, sort of more normal year.
I agree.
As I had put that on the, sort of on the potential cutting block, I will support it maintained, you know, in this budget, but with a fair amount of documentation as to, to your point, Jamie, is it needed seven days a week? Is one person the right person? If we don't get Bob again this summer, are we pleased with the agency in general? Just a lot of feedback. I think will be important for this analysis this time next year.
I think that Lori and Adele made some very compelling points about the benefit of having someone looking at our parks and helping to enforce the rules. So I think I, I think I see board concurrence on that, although I don't know that I've heard from David.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I'm on board with it. I think that our needs in that regard are evolving. They kind of came out of emergency last year, and they will evolve going forward as COVID goes away and we determine what the right utilization is that Krista was referring to. So we can figure all those things out as we go, but certainly everyone who is charged with managing and improving our park system thinks it's a good idea. So I think we, we should support it.
Okay, good.
Okay, I'm going to take the next one, which is the library's proposal for $6,000 for COVID expenses in the kind of orangey block, which are all the remaining town COVID expenses. So the 6,000, I believe, was the whole amount the library had in there. What we discussed, Jen and I discussed today, and what we're proposing to you, if we assume that we should be returning to more normal activity in the fall, calling it October, that's three quarters of the year with normal numbers. So we're proposing to reduce all the items that town departments had put in for COVID expenses by 75%. I will note, we'd already proposed a reduction in the senior center of $1,300, so this is adding 9.50 there. And then the youth services is actually an add, not a reduction, because we are assuming return to normal programming. So on that one, you see an add. On the expense side, you'll also see an increase in the revenue. So, you know, our theory of the 75% is, you know, something you may wish to discuss.
So I completely support the theory. You know, even if vaccines are somewhat delayed, I think the vast majority of the population who wants vaccines will have them by October. The thing that I really struggle with, quite honestly, is taxing for any of these expenditures. I, I would almost rather eliminate all of these expenses and, of course, support any department that needs to, you know, address a COVID-related expense, but then go back to the Board of Finance, you know, by calendar year end and ask them for an appropriation for any COVID-related expenses. I just have a hard time taxing people for the unknown. Sarah?
I hear you. But I'd also like to put out there that I'm seeing Phase 1 folks, the 75 and older. You know, we haven't yet gone to 1B or, and those folks, their second appointment is maybe March or April. I just don't see us to get the percentage of folks that we would like to see inoculated by this fall. I would love to, I would love to be proven wrong. Please prove me wrong. I, I swear. I'm concerned that when we reduce these expenses and we still need them, because we, I know we're trying so hard within Town Hall to be open. The library's doing a great job pushing to be open for everyone. If they're still trying to, you know, stay open and they need these things, I would hate to not put them in.
I think what I'm saying, Sarah, is if, if these supplies are needed, these supplies will be provided. They'll just be funded in a different way.
Okay.
That's what I, that's really what I'm saying.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I want to respond to what Sarah said. If, if by virtue of the budget process, it would be interpreted that the town is not going to provide these things, that's totally not true. So the real question really is, do we want to make COVID expenditures in the next fiscal year something that we have to go act, just ask for, which would be granted clearly? Or do we want a budget for them and require the taxpayers to pay it in advance? That's the real question, seems to me. It's not that we're not going to provide those services.
No, I hear you. I just, yeah, as long as we can do that for our facilities, yeah.
Kate, what was the dollar value, then, of this adjustment? Do you have the total there? I didn't, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I guess I'd love to know what's left in the budget. What does the 25% represent in terms of dollars? Maybe we're not talking about that much.
Well, you, you've got to throw the youth services.
Yeah.
That's not on that basis.
I would still, I would still accept the adjustment to programs returning to a more normal in the youth services department. I'm only talking about, I'm only talking about the expenses.
These reductions that we have that are 75%, they total about $15,000, so we should have about 5,000 still in. There is one item that Kate and I discussed, and we chose not to reduce it at all, and that was the $30,000 that's in for unemployment, because that is kind of a separate animal. So we were keeping that in as requested.
Okay, so $5,000. You know, if, if there's some concern that this flags to the public that we're not concerned about COVID, I certainly wouldn't want to do that. You know, I, I can be compelled to, to accept this 75% reduction.
Yeah, I would support that for over $5,000 for the 25%. If that gets us through this summer and provides more comfort for the community, for $5,000, I would absolutely support that. And thank you for the.
Oh, we lost you, Krista.
You muted yourself, Krista.
Yeah, Krista, we can't hear you.
Am I unmuted? That I feel the $5,000 to take us a quarter of the way through into the early fall is an appropriate way to look at COVID right now, recognizing that the funds would be there for the community from the Board of Finance or RTM if needed, if we did have a situation needed.
You know, I, the other thing that we can do is, you know, support this, these changes as recommended, and then flag it to the Board of Finance, and they may want to set, set up a separate COVID reserve fund. And they could make a further adjustment at their level if they want to.
Right, they have all the numbers here, so they can choose how they want to budget the year. You know, I, I had an issue with a year of COVID. I was struggling with that from the get-go, so I appreciate this further analysis.
Okay, is everybody good with, we'll accept this recommended adjustment?
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, so this next number, 305, that is what's the change that is needed in the General Fund for the contribution to the Capital Fund, based on all the other changes you've put in. So that's an add primarily from the 250 for the.
Yes, of course.
Okay.
Yep.
On the revenue side, we'd be adding back $37,000 to Youth Services, assuming a return to normal programming in the fall. Then these are two items that you had discussed. Let's see, how, what, well.
Kate, before you do that, can we go back? I just want to double check on the library. We had a reduction of $6,000, which was the full amount of their COVID. Do we want to apply the 75% approach? Do we want to leave it as is? Do we want to cut the whole thing?
Well, I think it should be the 75% approach, but
Agreed.
I don't get to vote.
Yeah, I'm not.
I think we should be consistent across the budget.
Okay.
Yeah. I was assuming the library was part of that same 75-25, yes.
Okay, so skipping down here to the bottom, these are items that you had discussed in previous meetings, recommending removing from the, recommending to the Board of Finance that they bond for it, rather than tax for it. This is the way I want to phrase it.
I wholeheartedly support the bonding for the sidewalks. Ed told us today that you can see the, the metrics on asphalt sidewalks last 30 years, concrete sidewalks last 50 years. I'd like to add to this potential bond, the tennis courts at Cherry Lawn. I, I believe they're going to be done in post-tension concrete, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, yes.
Correct.
Correct.
So that makes sense to me. And then we need to discuss the, the fire apparatus. So we know the work that the Board of Finance did. It was different than what I thought they were going to do. But they came back with a schedule to smooth the reserve contribution, which actually significantly increases our budget this year. I think I heard from all of us that we believe that fire apparatus can and should be bonded. So if we believe that, the action that we would take tonight would be to again eliminate the reserve contribution.
We lost Krista.
Oh.
Oh, there she is. I'm still here. I just had to turn off the camera for a moment.
Okay. The action would be to, again, this year, eliminate the reserve contribution and try and compel the Board of Finance to, in the year that the equipment is acquired, to bond for it. So. Love to hear your thoughts.
Kate, you sent out another one of these sheets that had the apparatus analysis on it. I'm not sure if this one does. But it was interesting because some, oh, there it is. Okay, thank you. Comment was made that some of the records prior to 1992 are not too clear, so they may have had longer lives before they were...
Right, right. So like this pumper that says it was only, you know, got rid of it seven years old. What I could not find, so understand, back in the 90s, our fixed asset records were kept in Excel spreadsheets, and those are not all still around. I could not find the 99 records. I did find a document that was dated, I think it was dated 99, but it was just a list of apparatus. And the pumper it had from Norton Heights was like from 1980s, not 1998. And the tower ladder, you see two tower ladders here for Darien. It had been purchased in '75 and refurbished in '98. So these numbers, I think, are also off.
Okay.
Wow.
So the yellow area is really not a good representation, that we really think that the lives are longer than the...
I think some of those are, yeah. Because, you know, it may have had to do with when these records were put into the current computer system, what numbers were used and what information the person entering, you know, they may have made an error.
And again, if they use a rehab number for the year, that's a different story than when they bought it.
Right, right.
So I think that we're fairly confident that the life of the apparatus is usually 20-plus years.
Yes.
At least the way it's been maintained by the three fire departments.
Yes.
So that would say to me, the life expectancy is such that it falls into a bonding. And certainly the dollar amount far.
Jen, is this, would this be an acceptable financial practice, in your opinion?
Absolutely.
Okay. So what I'm going to recommend then is we cut the fire apparatus replacement reserve amount and ask the Board of Finance to reconsider their thoughts on bonding. And if not, they can add it back into our budget. But I feel pretty strongly that we should be bonding these pieces of apparatus.
I would agree strongly, too. Also with the sidewalks, and also if you're building your tennis courts with post-tension and all that, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
They all seem to fall under the definition of bondable. That's a correct adjective. I don't know why they would be accepted in that manner.
Right. We always want to preserve our excellent financial accounting practices. So never want to do anything that jeopardizes our bond rating or isn't a best practice. So I look to our experts, Jen and Kate, to give us guidance on that. So I think I'm hearing concurrence to remove the reserve amount this year. I want to be sure to say publicly that we support providing our volunteer firefighters with the tools and apparatus that they need. We just need to find the best way to fund them for the taxpayers.
That's the only discussion.
Yep. Okay, Sarah?
Do we need to look at that kind of spreadsheet that Kate, you had put together as far as the fire apparatus and what we would need to be putting in the reserve, as far as how many years out and what was going to be needed? Do we need to, I guess, then have a different discussion on if bonding is an alternative that would change that formula?
Well, first, that was Jen, Jen's work, not mine.
Oh, sorry, Jen.
If you are moving to bonding them all the time, then that schedule, you still need the schedule.
Right.
You know, you still need to have, you can't just, bonding is not a magic tool for all problems. Still need to discuss what should be replaced and when. You still should be making sure that we have the appropriate level of apparatus. You know, just because we're bonding now doesn't mean we should go buy apparatus we don't need, right? So you still need to have that schedule to determine and to help prepare and plan for the bonding.
Absolutely.
Kate, would the emergency study help define how that process is made each year? In other words, right now, the departments decide, here's, we want to buy a new piece of apparatus. Here are the things that we want on it. Well, maybe that should be reviewed by somebody who's saying that those are appropriate. Or, wait a minute, you're asking for stuff that's only applicable to a huge metropolis. I don't know.
Yes. I think that is something that needs to happen.
And the study might help us in that area.
I think that might be something that the study suggests that we do.
Okay.
That's a good point, Kip. That's a good point.
The other thing that I do think requires some review, you know, on this apparatus schedule, we've got three years where we have multiple pieces of equipment. So, you know, one way to smooth that is to see if it's feasible to shift the purchase years, depending on, you know, the condition of the vehicle, so that we're really not buying two pieces of apparatus in a year, two or more. I'm looking at fiscal '23 where we're supposed to be buying three for $2.5 million. So whether we're paying cash or whether we're bonding, I think it would be a good practice to see if this schedule in and of itself can be smoothed out a bit, along with the comments that you make.
Another comment would be, does the schedule purport to show the day of delivery of the vehicle, which is the 75% payment? Or is it the day you make the down payment of 25% to purchase the vehicle? So in other words, you've got, if you've got a year and a half or whatever it is, from the time you place your order with a 25% deposit, which I understand is the rule, and you get your equipment, maybe two years later, and pay 75%, those factors have to be put into the bonding calculus as well.
They would factor into the cash flow, but for us to enter into a contract and issue a purchase order to begin the building of one of these pieces of equipment, we have to have the full appropriation available. Otherwise, we can't commit to a purchase of that size.
All right, this is government.
There would be two things happening, like the decision when to appropriate the money and then the decision when to bomb the money.
Sorry, I forgot. We're in the government world.
Yeah.
Those of us who worry about cash flow is different. We're just different animals.
And I will tell you, Kip, there was one year where we, I forget which apparatus piece we were buying, but the dealership offered us a discount for paying more than the 25% upfront. And we jumped on it.
Okay, whatever. I'm not, I'm not saying it's a 25% or 30%. I'm just talking about timing of your cash payments. But Jen, to answer the question, because it's an appropriation issue.
Right. Jen, you said it had to be done all at the once.
Right, we have to have the full amount appropriated to commit to the purchase.
So the question still is a relevant question. On the apparatus replacement schedule, is the apparatus logged in here in the year that they're taking receipt of the vehicle or the year in which they ordered the vehicle?
I don't check with Bobby. I think it's the year that they're beginning the purchase process.
Okay, great. Okay. Is that for tonight?
That was it. You know, I did speak to Pete Solheim again about the building revenue. And we included a tab in here that showed you our history of budget to actual. And just want to focus for you on the last couple of years where we are, you know, estimating $2 million and receiving $1 million. You know, we've been trying to build the redevelopment projects into the revenue estimates. And they didn't move as quickly as we anticipated them to move. You know, I'd be reluctant to, you know, we have received a significant portion of them now, but I'm not sure we should be increasing it. I also did talk to him about the swimming pools. And that's not a significant source of revenue. Okay?
Although to David's point, they ain't cheap.
I was surprised when they actually showed me one permit for $100,000.
$100,000, $100,000 minimum. Yep.
Yeah, that's minimum. That's before you re-landscape, you do any upgrade to the decking materials. All those kinds of things.
I don't live in that world, so...
I probably want to have...
It's a big rubber swan, too.
Okay. You know, we do still have a couple of things that we're waiting for that we will, we should have by Monday. And I think that was it.
Could we just review what those open items are, please?
Sure. The concrete pad, we want to get that, the information from the Fire Commission on what their specs were. We're waiting to hear on the evaluation of the police vehicle. You were going to get some more, we were going to talk to the Historical Society?
Yep.
And I think that's, I think you've addressed all the others tonight that...
And we're going to revisit the Edgerton property conversation on Monday.
Yes.
Correct.
And you're going to, if anybody has questions regarding that, you'll send them to me so we can answer them.
Actually, Jamie, you know, I didn't speak up before. Can I just comment on the Edgerton thing really quickly? This is one I'm a little torn on. I mean, I live near Edgerton. I went over and I walked the property today, so I've actually walked as far as I could and sort of marked it off. I can definitely see the potential that exists for the property. And since I live in the neighborhood, you know, I'm generally favorably disposed because I know I would be down there. That said, it's unclear to me. That property has a lot of unusable space because it becomes incredibly steep towards the back portion of the property, the portion that's sort of to the top left or the left side of the cottage area. That's probably unusable land currently. So normally, when we would do a project, we would sort of have, you know, things like the exact perimeter dimensions that we're planning on clearing, exactly how much grading, how much trees we're taking down. And, you know, I trust Ed implicitly because I think he is incredibly detailed in the work that he does. But normally, we would see a more detailed estimate about what the cost components would be before we would go forward with something like that. So I guess where I am tonight is I'm still torn because I feel procedurally, this is not yet up to the level that we normally engage in.
Yeah, so I can't disagree with that, and we're going to have ongoing discussions. I was just hoping that we could not lose another year by needing to wait to budget it for next year's budget, that we would, you know, put a marker in the budget to get some basic work done.
Fair enough. Did you, I know you spoke to one of the neighbors, and I don't really know if there's any formal written agreement with the neighbors around there. Is there anything that needs to be reviewed, done? You know, broader participation beyond just talking to the people that you've already spoken with?
So Mr. Fodson, who I believe is in the RTM, has accepted the role of being the, sort of, the organizer for the neighbors. So he's reaching out to the neighbors. He will be communicating back to us through the process. We absolutely want full participation from the neighborhood. He was very favorably disposed to the idea of having this, at a minimum, be an open space environment for people to enjoy in one way or another. Walk dogs, have picnics. And then we really go from there. There's a number of other things that we should be discussing as ideas, get feedback from the neighbors on it. So, you know, we'll continue the dialogue on Monday. And if we have to push it off for a year, that's fine. I'm just, it's just been sitting fallow and unusable for, in my opinion, too long.
Do you think it would be possible or for Ed to help us, you know, a little bit, understanding that the exact things we may not have yet? Things like, take the maps from the prior study that have been done and sort of, you know, pen in the general area that we think could be included in the project? And, you know, he has given us a $75,000 number, so he obviously has some idea in mind for how much would be related to each of the components, maybe. I'm just, I'm fishing for just a little more information if we're comfortable with that.
Sure, we can ask Ed to see if he can give us any more detail. Yep.
That'd be great. Thanks.
Sure.
Jamie, I had one more thought on Edgerton. If possible, if we can get from Monday, let's say we were able to get this done by the fall. Let's say this goes through and we get this done. Who then is responsible for maintaining the property? And is there a correlated budget item that would be related to that? Is it under Parks and Rec? You know, what is it under? Is it mowing? Is it shop? Like, you know, what is it? And maybe we should be looking at that also.
So this is a parcel of land that's in the town's control. It is not dedicated parkland. And we don't, at least historically, we have decided that we don't want to dedicate it as park property because there's value in having the town hold on to land. If you ever have to replace parkland somewhere else in your community, it's important to have some land that you could utilize for that purpose.
Right.
So I would imagine it would be like Highland Farm, where it would be mowing and could be done by the Parks and Rec Department if they would agree. It's a much smaller parcel. You know, we certainly could also talk to the Board of Education. You know, I'm pretty sure they bring lawn mowers over to that lower field with some regularity. Maybe they wouldn't be opposed to running through the Edgerton property for us.
Yes, I just was curious if we need to also put in maintenance.
Yeah. I don't think, if you recall, I don't think the upcharge for mowing activities at Highland Farm was significant. I want to say it was $5,000 add to the operating budget at the time, and that's for 16 acres. This is less than seven, so I think it would be, Kate, you can correct me if I'm wrong, a fairly insignificant amount of operating expense.
Yeah, I think it would be pretty insignificant in... Yeah, I think it would be pretty insignificant in, it would depend on what you, you know, if you were just leaving it as grass and it, you know, it doesn't need to be cut to specs for a ball field, probably mow it once a week.
Yeah.
It won't take long, it's not a big add.
Okay, we'll get, so try and get some extra info from Ed for Monday.
Yeah, I would like to support, I kind of, I'm curious where our numbers fall. I mean, not, it's not a big expense, but I think I'll be swayed also very much by our final numbers, what we get after tonight's discussion.
So speaking of that, will you guys, Kate and Jen, be prepared to send us some, you know, a version tomorrow of the changes that we've made?
Yes.
That we've modified, in other words?
Um, I'm sorry, I have one last question regarding, back to COVID. Your highlighted orange senior center revenue, was there any adjustment there? If there, I'm thinking we discussed the youth commission would be, or youth services, rather, would be starting in September with appropriate programming returning to normal. Is the senior center assuming the same and the corresponding costs and revenues associated with that kickoff date? We were not assuming any change in revenues from the proposed budget for the senior center. That, I'm sorry, do you recall what timeframe they're working with for a return to normal?
Fall.
Okay, so they were already planning fall?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, that's interesting. So now, though, the senior center is on the same page as the youth services?
Correct, now they are.
Okay.
Okay, anything else for tonight, Sarah?
Related, are we near where we need to be with these adjustments? I mean, do we have?
Depends on what you consider where you need to be.
Right, so where, you know, are we way off if we take out the bonding request? I mean, we still have 1.7 million to cut that we need to look, look at?
Can't answer that because you've all never taken a position on where you wanted to be. And, you know, if you remember, you know, one of my theories is, you know, you should first be thinking about what are the programs you want to, you want to have in place and then take a look at it. Are you near where, if you wanted to be in the Board of Finance's target range of 3%? With the recommendations for bonding, yes.
Okay, I asked that because it was on the spreadsheet, so just, okay, thank you.
As well, I'm waiting for that magic number on Monday.
Yep.
I did ask Jen to tell me, or to figure out, that if we kept the same mill rate with our increased grant list at 50, $58 million, what would that mean for tax revenues? I think, Jen, you came up with about $982,000 additional tax revenues at the, at the same mill raise we have today. So I'd just throw that in the pot to be thinking about, that's like additional revenue, if you will.
Yeah, no, it's a good point, Kip.
And, and keep, you know, I think we've done some good work here, keeping in mind that I believe we all agreed that we want to maintain the level of service with some modest enhancements this year. So I think, I think given that and the recommended items for bonding, I think we're coming in at an okay place. I'm, I'm not ever going to call a tax increase to be good, but I think we're okay. So we'll look forward to your, your spreadsheets tomorrow. All right, anything else? No? Okay, well, thank you all very much, it was a good evening. Before we leave though, I know we have members of the Finance and Budget Committee and the Board of Finance with us this evening. I don't know if they want to make any comments before we log off. If you do, just unmute yourself and we'll recognize you. Let's see, no unmutes. Okay, I see Bert, hey Bert?
Since Jack is not responding, I, I just respond for F and B and we have no questions at this time.
Thank you, Bert, great. Jack's good, we put that in the chat. Okay, excellent, well, thank you all very much. We will be back here on Monday night. It's anticipated that Monday night will be our final deliberations and we should be able to vote on our budget recommendation Monday night, so it appears that we will not need the Tuesday budget evening that's in our calendar.
And Monday is a regular Board of Select meeting, so you'll be getting your packets tomorrow.
Great.
It'll be a different room.
Okay, yep, all right, thanks everyone, thanks Jen and Kate.
Thank you, everyone.